So my dear friends, in this parish, we have lost one of our our pastor, our faithful minister who worked here until the beginning of the pandemic, Karen Miller. And so our parish is mourning at the moment. We are reflecting and reflecting about her life and her ministry among us. And hoping that in that reflection, we will be strengthened to continue the work that she did among us. So as we reflect on her life, we get healed, we get consoled. So I want to begin this Bible study session by reading one of the Psalms that we usually read at the celebration of lives and of funerals. That is Psalm 23, which is a very popular Psalm. But that Psalm actually underscores the fact that God is in control when we cannot do anything, when we even lose our lives in this world, that God provides for us and we will never want for anything. So I'm going to read that Psalm as a way of prayer at the beginning of this session. "In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, Amen." "The Lord is my shepherd; there is nothing I lack." "In green pastures God makes me lie down; to still waters He leads me. God restores my soul. He guides me along right paths for the sake of His holy name. Even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for you are with me. Your rod and your staff comfort me. You set a table before me in front of my enemies; you anoint my head with oil; my cup overflows. Indeed, goodness and mercy will pursue me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord for endless days." Oh God, our shelter, God, our strength, God, our provider, thank you for gathering us once again in this Bible session, Bible study session. May we be open to your word to us this evening and may our discussion this evening be inspiring, so that living by what we learn, we may always be confident that you are always with us. And for that also, that we may be assured that all our departed brothers and sisters, including Karen Miller, rest in your peace. We ask this through Christ our Lord, amen. "In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, Amen." So today we are going to look at Jesus's ministry in other parts of Israel, other part of the Holy Land. And the fact is that all we have been doing in this season is to study the Gospels and what Jesus' life and ministry were and where he ministered and what he taught, what he did, so that we have a basis of everything else that we read afterwards. We have studied from the beginning, the time before his birth, his birth and his baptism, his preparation for ministry. And we have studied some of his ministry in the north, in Galilee. The fact is that Jesus', Jesus's ministry can be plotted on the map. The places that he ministered in can be plotted on the map. And each of the places where he ministered, the places themselves can give us a background to understand what he taught and what he did there. So we have talked about Galilee. And Galilee took a bigger, or the biggest chunk of Jesus's work. Jesus worked largely in Galilee and he was known as a Galilean. So that is the place he worked longest and most. But there are other places that he worked in and ministered in. And so the first place outside Galilee that Jesus worked, now we want to look at Samaria or his work with the Samaritans. So that is what we want to look at now. In other times, in the subsequent times, we are going to look at his work in Judea and then his work in Jerusalem. We will explain the meaning of these places in relation to the meaning of the work that Jesus is doing in these places. And you will hear in the Bible all the time, Judea. What is that? What does that mean? Where is that? You will hear Jerusalem. So they signal Jerusalem out of Judea, although Jerusalem is part of Judea, but they single it out. They single Jerusalem itself out of the whole territory of Judea. Then you hear also, you hear Galilee. Then you hear sometimes Decapolis. And sometimes you hear Samaria. And then this one, you don't hear it much, Perera. Perrea, you don't hear that much. But in the Bible, these words keep coming. Judea, Samaria, Galilee, Decapolis. So we want to unpack that. And the first one that I want us to study outside Galilee, as you see this map here, the yellow part. So this whole part is the Holy Land. But the yellow part here is Galilee. And then you have Samaria in the middle. Then in the south, you have Judea. The whole place here is Judea. But Jerusalem is part of Judea. Jerusalem is one of the cities of Judea. When we say Samaria, Galilee, Judea, we are talking about large territories. And then in those territories, you can think about it as a county. And within the county, there are cities. And so Samaria is like a county and there are cities in there. Then you have Judea, this whole place here is Judea. And in it, Jerusalem is right there. Where is Jerusalem?
Down below, right down below, there you go.
Yeah, that's Jerusalem right here, which is the capital of Judea. But the Bible always mentions Jerusalem on its own. It singles Jerusalem out of the whole territory of Judea. And why it does that, we need to know that. So when you are hearing a reading from church, we are reading and we say, "He went through the whole towns of Judea, Samaria, and to the ends of the world." Then you can sit with that, you can picture that. And Decapolis is the area across the Jordan. So this is the river Jordan right here, okay? The river Jordan, you have the sea of Galilee here and you have the dead sea in the south. And joining them is the river Jordan. And the river Jordan continues to the north, okay? So this is the river Jordan. But the area on the eastern side of the river Jordan in the north is the Decapolis. And Decca means ten. Decalogue, Decca means ten. Police is city. Police is city, they're police. So Decapolis means area of ten cities. Ten cities. And that area is where Jesus healed the man with a legion of devils, where Jesus healed the man with the ten devils, if you want a legion. So we are going to look at Samaria. We are going to look at this area here. This is our focus tonight. Jesus's ministry over here. He has ministered largely here already. He has ministered in many places here. Corazone, Capernaum, Magdala, Tiberias and all that. But now we want to look at Samaria. So there are there are two, there are a few texts that we are going to take later on to unpack Jesus's ministry in Samaria. But first of all, let us so first of all, let us look at what Samaria is. How did it come about? And many times you hear in the Bible, Samaritans are pictured as people who are not in good terms with the Jewish people. They are always not in good terms with the Jewish people. They are always on the other side of the Jewish people. And there's always a competition. Every time you hear about Samaria, Samaritans, the Jews don't like the Samaritans. So we have to talk about what is, what is, what is the, how did Samaria come about? And why is there enmity, enmity between Jewish people and Samaritans? Why do the Jewish people look down on the Samaritans? In fact, that's what they do. The Jewish people look down on the Samaritans and they think of the Samaritans as nobodies. Why, how did that come about? Why is that? Okay, so I want to give you a little history of Samaria and the Samaritans. So I'm going to get off this, I'm going to let us put on a map from which I will speak. So Samaria, the area that we call Samaria, came about when there was a divided, when the kingdom of Israel was divided. When the Israelites left Egypt and got to the Promised Land, they were a united nation of Israel. They all settled here. They all settled in Israel as one nation. So when they began to have kings, David ruled a united kingdom. David ruled, this whole place here is the Promised Land. David ruled a united kingdom. When David died, his son Solomon took over from him. Solomon also ruled a united kingdom. But when Solomon died, let me first say one thing. When David ruled, when David was king, David is from the south, okay? David is from the south. He is from the line of the kings. And they come from Judah. Judah is in the south, okay? And David comes from there. So the kings were coming from Judah. But when Solomon died, the people of Israel, the whole people, came to Solomon's son, the one who inherited Solomon. He is called Rehoboam. The people came to him and told him to lighten the taxes that is levied on them, on the people. The people want their taxes to come down. The people in Judah were not paying much taxes because they are the privileged people. They are the group of people from whom the king comes. So they don't pay much taxes. But the rest of the people were paying a lot of taxes. So the people asked him, "Please lessen the taxes for us. Your father had so much taxes on us, but you lessen the taxes for us." And he refused. And so he said, "I am going to double the taxes that my father gave you." So the people were like, "Okay, we are no longer going to be part of the kingdom. We are going to separate." So ten tribes, ten tribes. There are twelve tribes of Israel. Ten tribes separated themselves from Judah and formed what we call the northern kingdom. And that northern kingdom was what was called Israel, the kingdom of Israel. It is called the kingdom of Israel, it is called Ephraim. All that name is the northern kingdom. But they are all Israelites. And so the kingdom divided. The south, Solomon's son therefore only ruled the south. Let me see if this one works, okay. Okay, this one works. Solomon's son only ruled this side. You see Judah, that is Rehoboam's kingdom, the king of Judah. The rest all along to the north here, they all became one nation called Israel, the kingdom of Israel. And when they separated, they chose a king that was called Jeroboam. So you have Jeroboam, who was the king of Israel in the north, and Rehoboam, who was the king of Judah. So they called the king of Judah, the king of Israel. And those ten tribes that formed the kingdom of Israel, they put their capital in Samaria right here, in the place called Samaria. The reason why they put the, they called this Samaria was that one of the kings bought a land here. One of the kings was called Omri, bought a land from a man called Shimmer. And so he named that place after the man Shimmer. That became Samaria. So that was the capital of the northern tribe, the northern kingdom of Israel. This is the north and this is the south. So there were two kingdoms that continued all the way until 735 B.C. 735 B.C. So that's Samaria. In 753 B.C., something happened. So you can see here the larger territory of the Middle East. You have Judah here with a capital in Jerusalem. Then you have Israel here, the northern kingdom, with a capital in Samaria. Then, so these are the Israelites. They are, these two nations, the whole Israel. You have Judah in the south and Israel in the north. But you have other nations, you have Syria. This whole place here is Syria with this capital in Damascus. Then you have another big, huge nation here called Assyria, with a capital in Nineveh. Nineveh. So you have the kings over here. We have the names of the kings all over here. You can see the king. Now, the king of Judah at 735 B.C., the king over there in Jerusalem was King Ahaz. The king in Israel who was in Samaria, the capital at that time is King Pekah. The king in Syria at that time was called King Raisin. And the king in Assyria at that time was called King Senacherim. Now what happened at this time was that this Assyria was dominating the entire area. It was oppressing. It was an empire of Assyria, dominating everybody here. So Syria, the king of Damascus, the king Raisin in Syria, joined forces with Israel, the king of Israel, Pekah. And they decided to invite Judah, the king of Judah, to join them to fight, to fight the empire Assyria, to fight this one. And Judah refused. Judah refused to join the two of them, the coalition. And when Judah refused to join the coalition, they got together to fight Judah. These two, these are Israel, their own brothers and sisters in the north, joined with Syria to fight them and subject them and force them to join them to fight Assyria. And when they decided to fight Judah, Judah called Assyria for help. Judah called this one for help. And when Judah called this one, Assyria came and took the whole of Samaria to exile. Assyria came and conquered the whole of the purple area, conquered all of them and took them away, took the population, deported them and scattered them in the whole of Assyria. And then later on brought foreigners to settle, to settle in Samaria area. A lot of foreigners came there. They took the Israelites out and brought foreigners over there. And some of the foreigners married other foreigners. And that is why the people in Israel, Judah, don't like those people. They don't belong to the covenant. They don't belong to the people of Israel. And therefore, Samaria became a place where you have foreigners, you have intermarried, interracial, intercultural, inter-mixture of cultures. And so the Jewish people considered them as impure people, people who are not qualified, people who are not legitimate Israelites. But you had some more Israelites on the top. So what we have, what we came to have is that we have Israelites who are in Judah, then we are foreigners in the middle, then you have some Israelites in the north. So the Israelites, people who are in Galilee, they are kingfolks of Judah, but there are foreigners dividing them in the middle. Samaria became, Samaria became a dividing territory of the entire Israelite nation. So if you, you can have people in Galilee. Let me go back here and show you again. Okay, so you can have, these people in Galilee are Israelites. Then Judah are people of Israelites. But these people now became foreigners. They were the foreigners, the mixture of. So the Israelites can travel. When they are traveling, sometimes when they are traveling through here, they are not allowed to go through. There is always dangerous trying to go through here. And you will hear some of the stories that they didn't allow them to pass through. So sometimes they have to go across the Jordan and then come here. That's the way they were traveling to their kingfolks. When Mary and Joseph had to go to Bethlehem to register with Mary pregnant, they marched across this side, okay? And to go to Bethlehem right here. Sometimes it's very dangerous to go through here because these are enemies. But they are dividing the people of Israel. So that's, that's how the territory, that's how the Israelites came not to like. By the time of Jesus, the Israelites did not like the Samaritans. Samaritans are unfaith people. They are, they are, they are not, they are not, they are kingfolks. So I'm going to move on. So this is, this is the, this is how, what happened. The king of Assyria from here came to, came to Samaria and took people out, took people out of here to this place. This is what this map tells us. So Samaria became, and Samaria is not far from Jerusalem, but yeah, it's right here. But all those people are not considered equals. And they were discriminated against. They were oppressed by the Jewish people, by the Israelites. Now, so Jewish perceptions of Samaritans is that Samaritans are foreigners. They are strangers. They are not part of our community. We don't need to do anything with them. They are not entitled. But the Samaritans themselves, they also claim when they were brought, when people, those people were brought to that land, they also began to claim the Israelite heritage. They begin to, they begin to refer to themselves as descendants of Abraham. So they also continue to do that. So but they are mixed nationalities. So you have foreigners, but you have mixed nationalities. You have people who are mixed race, mixed nationality and so on. And then they claim to belong, they claim to belong to Israelite religion. They believed only the five books of Moses. They believe only the five books of Moses. They don't believe anything else in the Old Testament. They only took the five books of Moses, which are Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy. That's it. Their scripture is that. They don't take any other book, not the Psalms, not the prophets, nothing like that. So but they were considered fake. That's a word, they were considered by Israelites as fake Israelites. Even today, many Jewish people consider people who lived in that territory, Shechem and Samaria, they consider them as no legitimate Israelites. They were, they were, they were known as offenders and enemies. They were known as offenders and enemies, okay? Enemies to Israelite religion, enemies to Yahweh. But they themselves practiced a lot of things that the Israelites practiced. So now let's go on to Jesus's ministry to Samaria, in Samaria and to Samaritans. And we are going to take three texts, okay? Three texts. The first text that I want us to look at is a text that talks about Jesus. You know, Jesus worked in the north. He worked very, very at length in the north, in Galilee. But then the place of his death, to accomplish his work, he has to die in Jerusalem. So a time came when he has to make a journey to Jerusalem, to the south. He went to the south, he went to Jerusalem at some point, Passover, when he was ministering in Galilee. He, every now and then will go to Jerusalem, like every other Jew, to celebrate the Passover, to celebrate the feast of Pentecost, Shavuot and all that. Rosh Hashanah and all that. He will go down there and celebrate, but then go back to the north, to the Galilee, to Galilee, to minister. Then there was one last time that he made his last journey to the south. And that is what this text talks about. When he was about to journey to Jerusalem through Samaria and how he was resisted. He was opposed by the Samaritans. I'm going to I'm going to, eh, eh, read that for us to hear. It's in Luke chapter nine, verse fifty-one through fifty-six. Luke nine fifty-one through fifty-six. So. "When the days for his being taken up were fulfilled, he resolutely determined to journey to Jerusalem. And he sent messengers ahead of him. On the way they were, on the way they entered a Samaritan village to prepare for his reception there. But they would not welcome him because the destination of his journey was Jerusalem. When the disciples James and John saw this, they asked, 'Lord, do you want us to call down fire from heaven to consume them?' Jesus turned and rebuked them, and they journeyed to another village." So Jesus was about to pass through Samaria. He sent people to go and prepare the way for his entrance into Samaria to pass through. But the Samaritan said, "No, why?" Because he is going, his destination was Jerusalem. Their arch enemy, he is going to their arch enemy. So they don't want that, they don't want to give him passage, they don't want to receive him. Now, you look at John and James, John and James are brothers. They were like, "We want to call fire over them" because they know that Jesus has power, you know? So they want to call fire to destroy them. But Jesus was a nonviolent, nonviolent person. He told them, "No, let's go through another way." And more than likely, they, they took the, the, the eastern part. They crossed the Jordan and went to Jerusalem through there. So, so that's, that's a story that is told about how hostile the Samaritans are. But they are hostile also because they want Jesus. Remember, the Samaritans, they weren't hostile to Jesus just because they are proactively violent people. It is that they were, they were fighting for recognition themselves, okay? Because the Jewish people oppressed them and think low about them. And so they normally welcomed Jesus. Remember, there was a story about a Samaritan woman that Jesus talked to and about the well. That Samaritan woman, uh, uh, finally, after the conversation, the whole Samaritan town came to believe in Jesus. So they, 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 what they are looking for is, is recognition. They want Jesus to, to be with them and stop with them and stay with them. But since he's passing through to Jerusalem, that's why they resisted him. Yeah, "You're going to pass through us, you want us to give you a passage so you can go and, and glorify our competitor?" No, that's not gonna happen, okay? So, so they, they were a reaction, not, not that they were, uh, uh, actually violent people. So that is the story over there. Let's look at the other story. The other story is a parable of the good Samaritan, you know that parable very well, right? The good Samaritan. Now, the, the good Samaritan story is in Luke chapter ten, verse twenty-nine through thirty-seven. I will not read it, but I'll just narrate, I'll just recall the scene to you. Jesus told, eh, eh, someone came to Jesus, actually, a Jew came to Jesus and asked Jesus, "What is the greatest of the commandments?" Jesus told him the commandments, "Love your neighbor, ask yourself." And the Bible says, but he wanted to prove that, that, that he's, he's, he knows the law very well. So he asked Jesus, "And who is my neighbor?" And so Jesus told him a story to reveal to him, to teach him who a neighbor is. So Jesus told a story about someone who was traveling from Jerusalem to Jericho, okay? I'll show you on the map later on about that. Jerusalem to Jericho is, Jericho is in the eastern part, near the river Jordan. And Jerusalem is in the west, okay? So the person is traveling from Jericho, Jerusalem to Jericho. And he fell, he fell, eh, eh, in the hands of robbers and, and brigands, and they beat him to the point of death. And whilst he was dying, now, he says, "First, a priest came by, walked by and saw the man on the roadside dying, but did not attend to his need" because he was late, he was going to the temple. So he went, he, he left. Then a Levite, a Levite, Levite is someone who belongs to the tribe of Levi, the priestly tribe. He is not a priest, but he is from the priestly tribe, that's a Levi, so, a Levite. So he too saw the man, but did not attend to the man. And then Jesus says, "Then a Samaritan traveler, Samaritan traveler also passed through the road and saw this man dying. And he was the one who went to attend to the needs of the man and brought him, put him on his animal and brought him to, to, to the care, care home, a hospital for, in our time, and, and paid for all the expenses." And so Jesus says, asks the man, "Who is the neighbor to that man who was dying?" And he said, "It was the man who, who cared for his needs." So he said, "Go and do likewise." But, eh, but in this case, Jesus used the Samaritan to show who, how neighborly life can look like. Who is our neighbor? The one whose needs comes to our attention, that's a neighbor to you. Anyone who comes to your attention as needing something that you can provide, you got a neighbor right there. So our neighbors change, our neighbor is not our next door neighbor, but someone who, who comes to our attention as needing us, needing our smile, needing our money, needing our time, needing our talent, needing anything. That, you got a neighbor right there. And it doesn't matter how far the person is from you, comes to your attention, you are in a position to, to, to take care of that person. Sometimes even it's a prayer, to pray for someone, comes to your attention to pray for someone. That's a neighbor right there. Uh, so, so Jesus, but Jesus uses the Samaritan. I'll tell you why again, I mean, when we finish with all that. Jesus uses the Samaritan to, um, to teach. But he's actually doing something to the, he's actually trying to teach the Jewish people something. When he uses, Jesus always privileged, now I won't say privileged, but always uses the Samaritans to teach the Jewish people about discrimination, about complacency, okay? We'll come up to that later. Uh, so let's look at the next story. So the parable of a good Samaritan is one of the key texts that tells us Jesus's attitude and ministry to Samaritans and relationship to Samaria and Samaritans. This one is the cleansing of the ten lepers, okay? This also is in Luke chapter seventeen, verse eleven through nineteen. Jesus went through a Samaritan town, went to a Samaritan town, just like the other story about the Samaritan woman. Jesus went to Samaritan towns and ten lepers followed him. And ten lepers came to him and begged him to heal them. And Jesus, now, what happens is that if you have leprosy, you are, you cannot mingle with society. You have to separate yourself and, and the burden is on you to do that. If you are caught mingling with the society, you can be arrested and, and put away. So, uh, so you have to wear something in your neck, you have to wear a bell that you are unclean. The priest would declare you unclean and give you a bell to wear. So that when someone is coming close to you, you ring the bell and say, "Unclean, unclean, unclean." So that is the kind of thing that was going on. Now, you got ten lepers who are called on Jesus to heal them. And when Jesus, when, if you are healed, if you have leprosy and you are healed, you are supposed to go to the priest to undeclare you, let's put it that way, to declare you clean. So you can join society and take the bell from you, okay? So when they called on Jesus to heal them, Jesus told them, "Go and show yourselves to the priest and you will be clean. Go to the priest and get yourself declared clean." Now, whilst they were going, they found themselves to be clean, they found themselves no more leprosy. They healed. But nobody came back except one. Ten people were healed, all of them went away. Only one of them returned, instead of going to the priest, he came back to Jesus and thanked him. And then the Bible says emphatically, that one person was a Samaritan. Was a Samaritan. Once again, and so he, he, he was the only Samaritan who came, the Samaritan who came back and thanked Jesus. And when he thanked Jesus, Jesus told him, "Go, your faith has saved you." So he did not just get a healing of his body, but he got salvation also because he came to say thank you to God, okay? Now, what was happening there is that, the lesson there is that the nine of them who did not come back, they are Jewish people. But because they are Jewish people, the Jewish people always think of themselves as privileged people. They, they think about themselves as entitled, entitled to God's grace. Uh, we are automatically say, we are, "Jesus is supposed to do this for us, you are supposed to heal us." And we don't need to thank you for that. But the Samaritans always think of themselves as not entitled. They are grace, they are like, at the mercy of God. And, and they are humble and so they can, uh, they are filled with gratitude. They notice when grace is, when they are favored by God. So Jesus once again is using them, using the Samaritans to let the Jewish people know that you guys think you are, eh, in automatically saved, but you have a shock of your lives. You are not until you begin to produce fruit, until you begin to be grateful people, until you begin to, to humble yourselves and shake off this complacency from yourself that, that just because you are born into this family or you are born into the Israelite family, doesn't guarantee you automatic salvation. That's a lot, I mean, these are just examples that I'm showing you. But Jesus used a lot of Samaritans to teach the Jewish people about their practices of exclusion, their practices of self-complacency, their practices of, of, of automatic salvation and entitlement. And warned them several times that, that you are not saved just because you are blood relatives of Abraham. You are not saved, it's not by blood anymore, it's by doing God's will, it's by living, actually living God's will. That is very important. So, so what is the significance of the Samaritans or Samaria in Jesus's ministry? That's what I want to summarize here. That Jesus's ministry and outreach to Samaria and Samaritans aim at teaching the Jewish chosen community about the danger of complacency, the danger of nationalism, the danger of exclusion, the danger of exceptionalism and ruling everybody else as outcasts. Everybody else who doesn't belong to the Israelite tribe as outcasts. The danger of hostility to strangers and foreigners. The danger of hostility to strangers and foreigners. The danger of ethnocentrism. Ethnocentrism, that's my, my ethnic group is, is, eh, sitting on everybody else. Is a privileged group and we are better than everybody else. So Jesus says, "Don't be too sure about that." The only way that you'll be too, too, very sure about that is when you are actually producing fruit, living the life that God has given to you, living a real loving life, a neighborly life, a life of compassion, a life of, a life of forgiveness, a life of peacemaking, all these things. If you're not doing those things, you can belong to, to, to the Vatican. You can be a pope and you will not go anywhere, you don't belong. Jesus was actually warning them about that. That's, that's what was happening here and discrimination of all kinds, okay? Sorry, uh, one more time, one more time. So Samaritans represent, Samaritans in the Bible, Jesus, Samaritans represent all those who may be considered illegitimate and oppressed by mainstream, mainstream pure-blooded, if there is anything like that, if there is anything like pure blood, pure-blooded Israelite or Jew. In comparison, Israelites or Jews are entitled to God's favors. That's what is in the conscience of Israelites. They are entitled to God's favors. Samaritans are not entitled, this is what they, they think about. And people who are not, this, this is even Samaritans because Samaritans are, some of them are mixed blood, they're Jewish and people from other places, okay? So you are talking about eh, the medium level of people who are excluded from the Jewish community. Then there is the, those who are far from the Jewish community are all of us who don't have any ties at all, any blood ties with Jewish people. As for us, we are lost, we are totally far away, okay? But thanks be to God, the Gospels, Jesus's teaching is not based on blood. It is not based on blood. And I, I know there are some Christians today who are like, they are all worked out with the blood relations to Israel and the Israelites and that. No, that thing has, that ship has sailed long ago. It is a spiritual connection, it's a spiritual birth. Who is my mother, who is my sister, my brother? It's not my blood. It is anyone who hears God's words and practices it. That's what Jesus said. One time Jesus was preaching and somebody came and told him, "Your, your mother and your brothers and sisters are outside looking for you." And he said, "Who is my mother, who are my brothers, who are my sisters?" Then he pointed to those who were listening to him and said, "Anyone who listens to God's word and puts it into practice is my mother, is my brother or my sister." Now, that was not to, to snub Mary. What that was saying is that she is not my mother because she poured me out. She is not my mother simply because she gave birth to me literally, I mean physically. She is my mother because Mary is an example of someone who heard God's word and put it into practice, I mean, dedicated her whole life for that, that idea that came to her, that she was going to be a mother of, of the Redeemer. She offered her life. In fact, she, she put a marriage in jeopardy and, and contributed her life to, to do God's will. In fact, she, she put a marriage in jeopardy and, and contributed her life to, to do God's will. And that makes her the mother of God. So Jesus was trying that. One time also Jesus was preaching and he was preaching, he was inspiring people so much that somebody shouted from the crowd, "Blessed is the womb that bore you." And Jesus shouted back, "Oh, blessed rather are those who hear God's word and keep it." That's, that's Jesus trying to translate the, 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 the Old Testament into a New Testament, translate from physical, material, uh, 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 way of living to a spiritual way of living. Yeah, that, that what we are about is no more our physical things. We are looking for, uh, we are looking for justice, mercy, forgiveness, uh, patience. These are the spiritual things. These are the things that, I, I mean, we have, we have the physical things already. How we use them is, is the new way, is the New Testament. So Samaria is, Samaria and Samaritans are very, very important in the life and ministry, in the meaning and the ministry of Jesus Christ. Anytime you hear about Samaria or Samaritans or Jesus talking about Samaritans in the scriptures, put it into this context. And you will see the meaning of that text will, 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 will jump at you, will come at you, okay? So I would like to stop there. Uh, next week we will talk about Jesus's ministry in Judea, okay? So we hear Samaria now, we're going to hear Judea, which is also, uh, the south, but that is different from Galilee, okay?